Twenty-third, 2015. We are in the boardroom of the administration building at 12121 West North Avenue. We will begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection, please. Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. The first portion of our agenda is for public comment on non-agenda items. So if anybody would like to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda, this would be your opportunity. The members of the Wauwautosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anybody who would like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we can move to our presentation. We have Washington School, students, families, staff members with us tonight, and I'll ask Mr. Hanley, please, to do the introductions.
Thank you. So, we're excited, because tonight I think you're going to get a sampling of what you would see any day at Washington. And every day at Washington, we have a stellar staff, working with some superior kids, and really working on having them challenged by learning, and also, though, discovering what their gifts and talents are. So, in addition to discovering those, they also develop those, and then they share them. So tonight, we're happy to share with you some of our gifts and talents, of both the staff and the students. We have a presentation of both academics and the arts. In charge of the academics are our phenomenal fifth-grade team here. Fifth grade, Ms. Kimmel. Fifth grade, Ms. Budkis. Fifth grade, Ms. McKehe. And then for our arts, we've got the grand, Mrs. Graber, also for music presentation. So, I think you'll really enjoy it. I've seen parts of it, and I'm just so proud of the school. So, with that, we'll start with our teachers, I think, Ms. McKehe. I just realized, I forgot who I should also thank, is, you know, the kids came out tonight, and their parents brought them. So, if parents, you maybe want to stand and let us see all the representation of the parents tonight, because it really, nothing happens in a school[213.01][213.01](applause) because you know nothing happens in a school without kids and parents who support them. So, thanks for coming out.
I'm going to keep this very short and brief. About a year ago, Mr. Hanley asked me if I wanted to join a specialized technology team, and I said yes, which, after 20 years in fourth grade, moved me up to fifth grade. And our first project together was to write a draft, or a grant, to the EFW requesting $10,000 for some of the technology and software that you're going to use tonight, and I would just like to say a very special thank you to the EFW.
It's called a Lesson 19 from Eureka, the Eureka Math, from the Common Core. And so what you need to do is try to read the problem twice quietly with your team, and set out a plan before you even start to work. And then your team members will show you the tools to use. But I want you to know our learning target today. Our learning target is, I can use what you understand in division to solve measurement story problems. Okay? Okay, so, read quietly the problem with your team.
So, if you'll notice, all of the computers have the same problem, and the students are going to collaborate to start solving the problem with the board member. So, see all of the screens. And then you'll see student one is right here.
Purple.
This team.
Okay.
Student two.
Okay.
Over here, we have student eight.
So, this is angle C.
So, can you see where the teacher can see all of the work all at once?
So, as students are working through the problem in the classroom, we as staff are able to kind of monitor and see, and as a problem comes up, we can present it to the class. So as we see student four is doing a nice job, Mr. Meyer, great job of your diagram, so we can zoom in and show that a little closer to show his work.
So if there was a team that was struggling, can you see where we can bring it up and start to show? We have a triangle, they're starting to put their measurement up. We also know exactly, the little bubbles are the students' names that are coming up.
Can you show me?
Notice the collaboration and the engagement. You can hear the energy and feel it in here.
Would you want to show me how you would do it, then?
All right, board members, although you're really into this, we're going to stop you right here. Technology Ghost, can you step back for a moment? We really appreciate your help. So again, from the teacher's standpoint, we want the Board to be able to see, too, that while you were working on this, a teacher could be monitoring this from our personal device. We have iPads that were also purchased through our EFW grant, or we can be working here. And again, if there's a great example that can be shown, or someone's work is happening, we can very easily just pop this up for all to see, and if somebody is having difficulty, we can immediately share with the entire class.
And there's an important time, too, when we celebrate, that when we ask students to go up and explain their thinking and what their diagram means, which is important, too, to get that verbal feedback. So, isn't this neat? Can you see how we're really using it for collaboration? The student engagement is huge. Do you guys like it?
Yeah, it's great. Graber, so students?
Nice job.
Thank you, parents and students, for coming up tonight, using the other half of our brains tonight now. With this portion of our presentation is members of our senior choir at Washington. These are fourth and fifth grade students. They're going to be doing two things. First, we're going to play an ensemble piece on the orf instruments. Orf instruments are, were created by a composer named Carl Orf, and he developed these along with a children's music curriculum, which is based on singing, chanting, playing, and moving. It's very kinesthetic, very hands-on. And they're going to be playing a piece called "Balophone." It's based on a melody from Ghana. After that, we're going to be singing a piece called "Tula Klizio." It's a song by Joseph Shabalala, who was of Ladies Smith Black Mombazo, a South African singing group that became world-famous when they toured and recorded with Paul Simon in the late 1980s on his Graceland album. Joseph Shabalala, the group's leader, wrote "Tula Klizio," this piece, in 1987 while riding in a taxi in New York City. At that moment, he was homesick for South Africa, and he missed his children. Because of the unfair apartheid laws at the time, he did not know if he would see them again. He was calmed by the thought, "Tula klizio nale passe kaya. Be still my heart, even here I am at home." Thank you.
You don't want to leave it here? I didn't finish the problem.
To everyone, Mr. Hanley, staff members, parents, kids.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Thank you so much, students. If you are able to stick around for a minute, there might be a couple of questions for you about your presentation. I'll leave the little musicians time to get their stuff put away, but... Board members, questions or comments on our presentations? Mrs. Fee, please.
I'll just say, thank you very much for bringing this in. It's very interesting, and helpful, and informative, and entertaining to see the software and the technology at work, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Casey, please.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Washington students and staff. I mean, I loved, loved, loved the energy in here tonight, and I think I speak on behalf, students of all of my board members, that we had such patient and kind teachers. I guess maybe I had one question. When we were doing the activity, and my answer was coming up on the screen, I was a little nervous, because I thought maybe I might have the wrong answer. And so, what would you say to one of your peers if they were nervous about that?
I'll wait till she's up there.
Well, in my opinion, when I make a wrong answer, I just quickly fix it to the right answer. If a classmate thinks that they have a wrong answer, I would just say, it doesn't matter, because even if it is wrong, you still have credit for trying.
Oh, I love that answer, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the Board? Well, I'm with Mrs. Casey, it's like, okay, it's right up there for everybody to see, right? So, but thank you again. We are having a presentation tonight on technology. We do have to make a lot of decisions on spending with regard to technology, so having this opportunity, to have this kind of a hands-on demonstration, is awesome. And, the music, what was it? About your heart?
Still my heart.
Yeah, it warmed my heart, definitely. So, thank you, thank you so much to everybody, and to the EFW also, for funding the grant. We appreciate it very much, and we appreciate everybody being here tonight. So, once more for the kids. Okay, our next item of business is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Okay, seeing none, may I have, is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, action items. We have a proposed resolution tonight that I will turn over to Mr. Meyer, please.
It is recommended that the School Board approve the following budget resolution on public school funding. Whereas Act 10, Section 2 of the Wisconsin Constitution states, "The legislature shall provide by law for the establishment of district schools, which shall be as nearly uniform as practicable, and such schools shall be free and without charge for tuition to all children between the ages of four and 20 years. And whereas, Wisconsin has a long tradition of providing a high-quality public education system, whereas investing in public education is an investment not only in our students' capacity for success beyond high school, but an investment in economic development and the future of Wisconsin. And whereas, since the 1993-94 school year, school districts have been operating under state-imposed revenue limits that cap the amount that schools can collect in state aid and local property taxes combined, and thus serve to limit school spending. And whereas, until recently, revenue limits have been increased annually at the rate of inflation to accommodate increases in costs to school districts and provide a stable and practicable annual increase for schools to use in budgetary planning. And whereas, Governor Walker's proposed 2015-17 state budget allows no increase in revenue limits in either the 2015-16 or 2016-17 school years. And whereas, with no increase in per pupil revenue limits, none of the additional state dollars proposed for K-12 education aid, i.e. $108 million in 2016-17, will go to classrooms, rather, it must instead be directed to reducing property taxes. And whereas, the state budget proposal eliminates $150 per pupil in pupil aid in 2015-16, and immediate and actual cut, and immediate and actual cut of $127 million in public education funding statewide. Because this aid has been provided outside of the revenue limit, districts have no authority to levy property taxes, i.e. cannot recapture this lost aid. And whereas, the proposed budget also expands taxpayer subsidies to private voucher schools, which will take additional money away from state general aid to school districts on top of the cuts, and reduce opportunities for public schoolchildren. And whereas, the proposed budget provides an additional $105.6 million in each year to increase the school levy tax credit. This money will be paid to municipalities, not school districts, and does not provide resources directly to schools. Although the name of this tax credit suggests it has something to do with money for schools, its only connection to school budgets is that it is calculated based on school levies. And whereas, Governor Walker and various legislators have made public comments in support of increasing funding for public schools if additional state revenue is available after April tax collections are counted. Therefore, be it resolved, the Wauwautosa School Board calls upon Senator Leah Vukmeer and Representative Dale Kuyanga and Rob Hutton to work with their legislative colleagues to support increased funding for public education in the current budget for the benefit of Wisconsin's future and for the benefit of all public school students, and I so move."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Milfeld. Board members, questions or comments on the resolution, please? Oh, and, Mr. Meyer? Sorry, I didn't see.
So, bear with me, please, while I explain what this means to me, and why it is so actually sad for me to hear of these budget proposals. Some 100 years ago, my grandmother, graduating from Bangor, Wisconsin area, public schools, attended what was then the La Crosse Normal School, which became now the University of Wisconsin at La Crosse, and she became a public school teacher. Some 60 years ago, my father, graduating from Bangor High School in Bangor, Wisconsin, hitchhiked in the winter to what was then the State College at La Crosse, and eventually he dropped out. Difficult to hitchhike the 20, 25 miles in the winter. Subsequently to that, I attended public schools in La Crosse, graduated, attended the University of Wisconsin at Madison, and the University of Wisconsin at La Crosse, a bachelor's degree from La Crosse, and MBA from Wisconsin. That was some 40 to 30 years ago, unfortunately, so long ago now for me. Then, my children, the fourth generation in my family, attended public schools here in Wauwautosa. Both children earned degrees from the state university system, Parkside and Madison. One of them became a high school teacher, a public high school teacher, in Wauwautosa for a period of 10 years. One earned a PhD at Wisconsin. The second left teaching is now working on a PhD at Wisconsin. And I have served on a public school board for 10 years. Our heritage and our community here in Wauwautosa, and the future of our children rests with these public schools, and with these great universities in our state. And so many of our public school students aspire to go to these great public universities in our state. And I hear this discussion with respect to this proposed budget, excuse me, this discussion with respect to this proposed budget, and stones are being cast at our great universities. And in the past four years, stones have been cast at our public schools. And I wonder, what have we come to? What have we come to in this state? Now, I understood four years ago that we were in an economic crisis, and we needed, we didn't have as much money as we used to have, and we needed to cut back. And fundamentally, we cut back on the backs of our public school teachers. Now, that's a tough thing for me. Four generations of my family attended public colleges, four generations of my family attended public high schools. Two generations of those four taught in public schools. But I understood. But now, this year, we hear that this budget allows the average property taxpayer in Wisconsin to save, to have a reduction of $10 over the two-year period of the budget. $10. Well, I brought $10 in tonight. Here it is, 10 Eisenhower Silver Dollars, 10 pieces of silver. For 10 pieces of silver, I can turn my back on 100 years of public education, my heritage, my community, the future of my grandchildren. So, for this $10, oh, by the way, the bag I brought it in cost $6. So, in order to really do this, I only get $4 and a cute little bag, and six of the pieces of silver aren't really going to be mine anymore. And I bring this in to highlight this. I understood four years ago that we didn't have the money anymore, but this time, it's for $10. And to justify it, we cast stones, we say our college professors don't work hard enough, they should teach more classes. When will we be done with this, what we're doing here? And so, I ask the good representatives to go to bat for our public education system in this state. It is a great system, and it does a great many good things for our people. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer? Anyone else? Mrs. Casey, please.
I guess I have a little bit different take on that. I think it's really early on, I do believe that these numbers will change, or at least I hope that they do. And I believe that, you know, we as, as board members and parents and community members that, you know, we can't allow our schools to be victim to think... that, you know, we can't allow our schools to be victim to things like this. And so, it's really important that we advocate for what we believe is important in our community, which is our public schools and funding, that we can appropriately deliver what we need to deliver to our students to make them ready for the 21st century. So, I hope moving forward that we can have some legislative breakfast with other area superintendents and school board members to express our concerns and hoping that we can kind of come together and do some advocating as community members and parents. So, I'm going to remain optimistic that we can have a voice and change some of this.
Mrs. Milfield, please.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly support this resolution. And I guess I would ask, what are the next steps, then, for us, providing we approve this and?
We'll put our signatures to it. And then, Mrs. Galante has it sent to these legislators.
Okay.
And then, yeah. We've had outreach from community members and parents wanting to know what to do. Dr. Erdl sent out that comprehensive letter last week. You know, part of the issue is people understanding because it's very important to point out that, you know, the details in here make it clear that there really is going to be a very large deficit. And yet, when it's talked about in public, you know, and Mr. Mack can probably talk about this, where, you know, the revenue cap and that type of thing, where it sounds like it's not going to be that big of a hit, but it is. And so, people then kind of step back or become complacent or less worried about it. So, it is important that people have the information. So, the letter to the community, this strong statement by our board in this educational piece is the next step. I know that Dr. Erdl and Mr. Mack speak to these representatives on an ongoing basis. The three of us did meet with Representative Kuyanga about a week or so ago. So, I, you know, how we mobilize or do we mobilize, I guess? I hope that parents individually contact their legislators and let them know of the importance. You know, they have to speak up. It's time, like Mr. Meyer said. Four years ago, it was difficult. We got through it. We keep getting through it, but it's different now. It's very different. And one of the big things that I'm most concerned about is the voucher expansion to people and removing the income cap and allowing the vouchers statewide. So, we're going to have people whose kids are already going to private school and they've been paying for it, now getting money that should be coming to our public school students. And we can't even anticipate, you know, that amount. We don't even know what that amount will be. So, this is where we are tonight. I'm sure we'll try to keep the lines of communication open with the legislators, but I think it's time for a strong statement. So, does that help?
It does. Thank you. One more follow-up question. You know, I'm very concerned about the polarization. And, you know, I know there was some mention of the throwing stones, casting stones. And I would just request that, you know, really, these are not easy situations to be in. I mean, I realize that education is, you know, a huge item within the state budget, but obviously, a very important item. And I would hope that there could be some, you know, working together to get to the answer and really to stop the polarization. I mean, this is really benefiting all of us. And with eighty-five percent of students in public education, I mean, it really is the future of our communities. So, I hope that message will get across to the legislators and because we all have to work together and it's important that we do.
Thank you. Mrs. Casey?
I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that I have had the opportunity to speak to Representative Kuyanga. And I truly believe that he is committed to funding more dollars to put towards public education. So, I was encouraged by that conversation despite the work ahead of him and other legislators. I do think that this is really interesting. I always say, when I come across people in education, those that are lying to me are the ones that tell me that they understand how public education is funded, with the exception of John Mack. I really think that it's a crazy formula. And I think that there needs to be more serious discussions about looking at how we fund education.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I believe Dr. Erdl wanted to speak as well.
As Mr. Meyer was reading through this, I mean, there's a lot that comes to my mind, but I don't have four generations involved in public education. But when you read nineteen ninety-three to ninety-four, that was actually my first year as an administrator. And there's been a number of comments about we kind of muscled through Act Ten and the cuts and all those things in tough times. And I think we've always just kind of put our head down and said, let's work through it. We can make this work. You know, the doors are going to open. Our kids are going to come and we're going to keep doing that. There's a bigger picture to all of it that I see that's really, for me, come to light. And it's more about just than just Wauwatosha. If we keep our localized view and say, we can, you know, we've been conservative in our funding or budgeting. We've got a fund balance. If tough times come, we can work through it and we're able to do that. But the bigger picture is if we're looking at public education in general, the key to public education, the key was in this room tonight, the teachers that work with our kids. If we don't have top-notch teachers working with our kids, it's going to start, it's going, our system's going to start getting worse. I'm not going to say it's going to fail. But it's just not going to be what we all expect of our public schools. We keep taking away from public schools or keep working on a negative process for public schools. Fewer teachers are going into it, less money going into schools. There's a lot of reasons why people are deciding not to go into public education or why they're not wanting to become teachers. There's always going to be a pool of candidates. Are we getting the best people? Are some of our best students deciding they don't want to go into public education? I think we've seen it. I know I've sent out a letter to all the parents regarding some of these comments, but we keep, there was revenue caps for a period of time, complex funding mechanism. Now, we're in a situation where we're supposed to be happy when they give us back a hundred and fifty that the governor puts in the budget and he takes away because then we're frozen. That's really what I think is expected. We're supposed to be pleased when they give back that hundred and fifty, so we're frozen for the next two years. That doesn't help anything. It doesn't allow us any growth. Education does cost money. Do we cut and have we been lean since nineteen ninety-three? As an administrator, yes. I've gone, I've never gone into a budget and said, what are we going to do with the extra money? How are we going to spend it? We've been cutting for twenty years in public education in Wisconsin. Our teachers in Wauwatosha are not just from Wauwatosha. They come from other communities in the state of Wisconsin. Our graduates don't just live in Wauwatosha. They go out and they have an impact throughout the state of Wisconsin. And when we keep taking away, sure, do we have, can we operate with a one million dollar cut for a year? Sure, we can. But can Stevens Point, can Green Bay, can all these other districts around the state that don't have a fund balance, that have other different needs than Wauwatosha? No, they can't. And when we fight, it's not just for Wauwatosha. We're fighting for public education in general. I guess I've never looked at it as strongly as I do now because I see so many different things that are happening that just make very little sense to me when it relates to teaching and learning for students. Today, another legislative proposal. Let's allow districts that have twenty percent of their students taking AP classes to change their school start date. They can start before September first. Somebody share the relationship between AP classes and when school starts and why that's a reward. So, we're going to get more students taking AP classes so we can start before September first. WAC lost half its members. Therefore, a whole lot of money that they use for lobbying. Whether you agree with WAC's voice and the weight that they carried at the Capitol, it was a very strong weight. They lobbied for public education. There's nobody doing it. School Board Association, they don't have money. They look at it from a different perspective. Administrators, we don't give to political candidates or to our politicians' campaigns. We don't have much of a voice to carry. The people that matter in this discussion are our parents, the parents of our students. We need them to advocate for what they want, not for more money, not for different schools, bigger buildings. They need to advocate for public education. It's an educational process for everybody. So, I think it's important that there's a voice coming from this school board. I think it's important that there's a voice coming from our parents. I think it's important that there's a voice coming from our teachers and administrators in our school district, too. Are we doing fine? Are our kids, are we achieving at very high levels? Absolutely. California was, too. They started going down because of lack of funding for schools. I don't want to end up in that same boat. So, let's keep the fight going for public schools in Wisconsin.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you. I just would like to add that my mother-in-law told her children that learn whatever you can because no one can ever take it away from you once you learn it. And in the past four years, the cuts have been done by taking things from the employees. And after ten years of doing this school board job, I don't see how we take additional cuts from the employees. I think the next cuts will come from the programs that we give to the children. And with those cuts, the children will leave here with less than what we used to give them. And that is the crossroads that we are at. The children will leave our schools with less than what we have given them in the past. And I just ask whether the community wants that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there any community comment on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Galante, the role, please.
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. Again, I'll remind board members to please see Mrs. Galante after the meeting to sign the resolution. We then move on to our reports portion of the agenda. We have Mr. Price for Technology Services. Thank you, Mr. Price, for being here.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about student resource allocation for the school year of two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and beyond, past, present, and future. What I'm really talking about is one device per student, one laptop per student. Our historical view of it, what have we thought about it in the past? How has the landscape changed and what do we use at the moment? Our past attitude to, the catchphrase, one-to-one, is that we've been cautious about it. I think that's been a good approach. We haven't, the other districts have jumped onto the one-to-one model historically and had varying degrees of success. But, you know, we've been a little bit more conservative. We have purchased devices, of course, and we have issued them where needed. But for various reasons, we haven't been aggressively seeking a one-device-per-student model. Part of that reason is that there really, there's been unreliable data in the past to support such an investment. You know, when school districts initially jump onto the one-to-one model, there's no historical data there to prove whether or not it's effective or not. A lot of opinion, but no quantifiable data that's been gathered over a set amount of time. So, as I mentioned before, we have historically acquired devices as we've needed them. One example of that would be the science digital resources that were brought into the high schools recently. We purchased a block of Chromebooks to support that initiative and so on and so forth. What has naturally happened over time, though, is that we've seen an inherent increase in the number of devices in our school in response to those curricular initiatives. Not because it's cool to have Chromebooks in the schools or it's cool to have devices, but to support those curricular initiatives, we've seen our secondary schools go to a position where they're actually at a two-to-one model now. We have a device for every two students in the secondary schools. And we're at about three and a half to one at the elementary schools. The demand for these devices has been such that not all of them have been funded with the technology services budget, but some schools have also dipped into their own building-based budget to buy more because we couldn't provide enough based on the demands from the teachers. As a result, the high schools are currently at one point seven five units, sorry, students per device. We've also seen the number of online resources that we use increase. I would be confident in saying that ninety percent of what students do with technology devices, technology being computers, there are other types of technology as well. But for the purpose of this discussion, when I say technology, I mean, you know, computers, online access. I would be confident in saying that probably ninety percent of what students do now are in an online format via an online service or application. And we've also seen teachers' comfort zones change naturally. Part of that was because we gave them laptops last year. But also, moving forward, the frequency and the accessibility of the Chromebooks in the schools and somewhat the demand from the students as well has sort of pushed them into areas where they maybe weren't so comfortable before. But, you know, they're getting there. They're more comfortable now. Here's a sampling of what we use currently, Blackboard. Each of these, this isn't everything, this is a small sampling, but each one of these products or solutions here are integral to at least one class, some of them to the entire district. But there are classes and curricula that, you know, if they did not utilize the tools that we see there, yeah, they could have, they'd find alternatives, right? You could always take a step back, but they're not as engaging. They're not as productive, et cetera, et cetera. So, over time, though, things have changed, right? Today, we do have citable research. One-to-one initiatives have been in place in different districts across the country and across Wisconsin. And they've been in place for quite a number of years. Any of the citable research that I have in this presentation is from a minimum of a three-year study. Some of them are actually ten years. For example, the state of Maine had the Maine Learning Technology Initiative. I think they initiated that like ten or eleven years ago where the state funded one-to-one computing and provided professional development, et cetera, et cetera. It's still live today. You can go to the Maine website for the ML, what is it called? MLTI and see what they're doing there. So, you know, there's a lot of people, federal studies, candidates for PhDs that have gone off and done their dissertations that have looked at these deployments. And we have some good data now that we can utilize to make decisions. And also, we have some solid observations that we've grown locally as well. You know, we, like I said, we've been cautious about the one-to-one approach. But four years ago, we did have that iPad initiative where we distributed them to different classes across the district to look at it ourselves and see where it was appropriate. And we made decisions from that investment based off of that. And good ones, I feel, and ones that will continue to base this. that will continue to base decisions off of that experience. So what I'm going to go through now are those two areas. First, I'm going to talk about what we're seeing locally, and then I'm going to switch over to the citable data side of the fence. So what are we seeing here in TOSA? For one, I talked to the teachers that utilize devices heavily in their classrooms, and there's a unanimous voice that organizational skills of their students are up quite dramatically in some cases, in particular with math, but that's not just limited to that range. Paperless classes, of course, that's sort of a given, right? If you're using a computer, but trust me, it's actually not a given. It's hard for people to break away from that. I still want to print this off and read it and so on, but we've seen over the years that this has actually taken effect. They don't have a printer in the class, and then they're forced to use it, and, oh, that's not so bad, and then they migrate away from it, right? We have found, and this may sound like a negative, that teachers are unable to exploit the devices we have as much as they want to, and that's primarily because we don't have enough of them. I've talked to teachers in both high schools that have said, you know, I would love to incorporate that technology into my class, but the availability of the carts that we have, I cannot guarantee that I'm going to be able to get them all year, so I have to be uber-optimal about how I plan my lessons and my time and so on. And I don't want to go down this path and not be able to follow through with it all the way through. Does that make sense? So it's not a negative, that's actually a positive to the teachers, but because we don't have enough, they're not able to take advantage of it as much. We're seeing quite a number of requests for units that they can take home by students at high schools, for those that are doing honors classes or college applications, et cetera. We try to meet them where we can, of course, but we can't do that across the board. We're also seeing now, I'm not sure if you're familiar with a Chromebook, but it boots up very quickly, and students are online quite literally within 20 to 30 seconds. And if they're already logged in, all they have to do is open the lid, put their password in, and they're back in. And over the last few years, teachers and students as well have become very familiar with that speed of access to these resources, right? Which makes the traditional Windows computers look, even though they're not, but seem archaic and very slow in comparison. And as more and more pressure comes on the teachers to be optimal in their time management and planning, the use of a lab, a traditional computer lab, compared to or in lieu of using Chromebooks in the classroom, is a most unattractive option because, in the worst case, they've got to move all their kids into that lab first, and then they have to log in, and then they're wasting the time as it goes through the login process and so on, especially in the lower grades. We see that happening. We see that schools are also looking to reclaim space that computer labs are taking. Excuse me, I've got some cotton out. As courses are added or initiatives are expanding, principals are looking for space in their buildings, and this computer lab's sitting there, right? In fact, we even have some schools, primarily the elementaries at this point, that are dropping their labs entirely in favor of mobile Chromebook carts. It was in McKinley, I believe, and Roosevelt this year did it. They completely got rid of the labs out of their library. They still have devices in their library in the carts, but they got rid of the four rows of desks, pulled that out, and utilized that for more traditional library purposes. And of course, then there's the increase in demand for carts and devices like I mentioned before. So moving on to the credible data, like I mentioned, anything I've got in here, every source was a minimum of a three-year study, up to and including a 10-year study in the state of Maine. What are we seeing in areas or districts that have one-to-one computing? Across the board, writing skills are improved. Across the board, writing productivity is up. An example of that would be, one district actually assigned an essay to their students and had two 45-minute windows where they could complete it. Some students had one-to-one computing, others, you know, did it handwritten, old-fashioned way. Now, obviously, if you're typing, you're going to be able to do it quicker, right? But out of that, they received 388 completed essays. They had the same sampling of kids, 400 on both sides. They received 388 completed essays. They only received 140-plus change from the handwritten students, but like I said, that's sort of a given there because typing is faster. What's more important with that, though, is that the work count was up significantly on the students that have one-to-one devices, and across the board and consistently, topic scores and convention scores were up as well. We're finding literary response and analysis improvements in math and science. It's found that there is limited benefit, but yet there are improvement in science achievement tests. There is increased engagement. This is very important. I think, coincidentally, Washington brought their initiative, their EFW initiative here before, but you saw live the level of engagement increase just from that sample. This is a very, very, very strong advocacy from all the sources that I looked at, was the increase in engagement at all levels. I've got a three-year Maine sample, a four-year Texas sample, you know, things that were greater than 5,000 students. And this was with particular focus on low-income and high-risk students as well. There was a study done where they saw a 9% increase in their state testing for ELAM math, and that was over a four-year period. One of those years, there were no devices, actually, two of them, I believe, and then the third and fourth year, the students did have devices. In the fourth year, they saw a sharp, and have maintained that 9% increase since that initial study. Now, in that study, they don't specifically say that the devices are responsible. No one's going to commit to one thing being the reason that academic scores go up, even if it wasn't technology, even if it was something else, wearing red coats or whatever. No one's going to guarantee that they can do it, but this study very highly pointed towards the potential that having those devices and having 24/7 access to resources and the ability to get the information when they wanted it was more than likely a very high contributing factor to that increase. That was across multiple schools as well, so it did eliminate the potential for, well, maybe they just got a good batch of kids that year. No, it was across all the school districts that had one-to-one, and they did not see the increase in the school districts that did not. Motivation is up amongst all the sources that I looked at, and disciplinary incidents. Motivation among, especially among low-income and at-risk students, and disciplinary incidents with those students are down. Motivation up, disciplinary incidents down. Again, that ties into the increased engagement that they're seeing. Increased frequency of teachable moments. What I mean by that is during a lesson, if a teacher or a question comes up from the student that maybe isn't specific to the lesson that's being taught but is related in some manner, it's not something that has to, the teacher has to say, you know what? I'll look at it tonight and I'll come back to you. They can say, let's investigate it now. Open up the Chromebooks and away they go. They find the answer, maybe they're done in two minutes. Maybe that provides another opportunity for broadening the education of the students. Regardless of how long that moment takes, it brings that opportunity into the classroom where it didn't exist before. And then, one very important finding from the state of Maine, and we're seeing this from other states and districts as well, but over this 10-year period in Maine, they found that there was an across-the-board migration from lecture-type classrooms to individualized and group work, meaning simply the presence and taking advantage of those teachable moments, et cetera, enabled the students to become somewhat facilitators of their classes themselves, migrated the teachers from the traditional sage-on-the-stage to the more guide-on-the-side model, allowed for individualized learning, group work, differentiation, et cetera, et cetera. So, starting in the year 2015, 16, the school year 2015, 16, all high school students will be issued a Chromebook for educational use. On our initial rollout, we're going to reorganize the current devices we have. We're not going to reduce the amount of devices in any of the other schools, the middle schools or the elementaries. We're just going to reorganize and take some of the older ones from the elementaries, move them up to the high schools. The reason we're going to do that is, I'll talk about in a minute, but we're going to do some shuffling around. We're going to purchase some new devices, new ones to replace the old ones at the elementaries. Elementary will also get a side benefit of some carts without devices from the high schools, and in summer break, we'll issue those devices to the high school students. New devices will be purchased for incoming freshmen this year and graduating seniors. Okay, new devices will be purchased for incoming freshmen this year and every subsequent year moving forward. Upon graduation, the seniors will be able to keep those devices and take them with them. Now, the question may come up about, well, why would we let them keep them? Why wouldn't we recycle them for one more year or two more years or get the most out of them what we can? Well, as it happens, Chromebooks are devices that really are great in an educational environment. The management of those devices is enabled via software from Google. Google puts a five-year lifespan on any new Chromebook. So a Chromebook comes out, they say, okay, we will support that in that management environment. It doesn't mean that the device is dead, but we will only support that guaranteed for five years. After that point, yeah, it's still a Chromebook, it'll work, but it doesn't come under the Google Apps for Education fold anymore where they'll guarantee that it's going to work in the management console and some technical stuff, right? So basically, once a Chromebook hits that five-year mark to us, it's dead, right? We can't use it in our, in our management domain. It doesn't mean that the device itself is dead. It can still be used, and it can still be used to access the internet, but to bring it into the district fold, we wouldn't be able to use it. Coincidentally, all the planets are actually aligned today so that the oldest Chromebook we have hits the 4.25-year mark when our next year's seniors graduate. So in that following year, those devices would reach a point where we couldn't use them anyway, right? And we have it structured in such a way that the devices we've bought are an annual purchase, and it just happens to slot together right at this point in time. So by doing it today, we're avoiding getting into a position where these things expire, and we've got to buy new ones anyway, but then we're going to be throwing all of these ones out. Much better to say, as long as you graduate, you can take this device with you because, you know, we can't use it anymore, and that way, from whatever you do moving on, maybe you don't have to buy a laptop to go to college straight out of the gate, or tech, or wherever you're going. If this helps you, that's great. Thanks very much for graduating. And then, of course, we'll do some ongoing monitoring and analysis and fine-tuning with this program as we move forward, right? So getting the most out of it. We're going to do this, we're moving ahead, but we also want to make sure we get the most bang for the buck, right? Technical community concerns, you know, we had that iPad initiative about four years ago. We got a lot of great feedback from the community about that, and we learned from that, so we're acting on it. We're going to address any of those concerns. Indigent family concerns, you know, there's always the question about what about the indigent families? They don't have internet access at home. We're going to address those. I'm already talking to providers. Don't have solid solutions at this point in time, but these are areas that will be addressed, and we, no child is going to receive a Chromebook and not be able to access the internet at home. So we'll communicate this to a large degree with the public, and we'll make sure that we start that early enough to get any additional feedback and react to it as most we see fit, as is needed, I should say. Tech support, we're good. We're in a good place for infrastructure. We've done a lot of stuff over the last four or five years to make sure we've got that highway in place. We've got wireless across the district. We've got a good internet connection, solid foundation, fiber between the schools. We've got to remain attentive to it, though. We can't let that slip. We can't let the road perish and get big potholes in it and expect people to still be able to drive across it. We will need a student support help desk, and so we're working on that as well, and we think we'll probably do something that's maybe student-run. I think that would be good. It's done, that initiative has taken place in a lot of other districts to a high degree of success, so we'll probably model something along those lines. And then it comes down to teachers, of course, you know. The demands there, it's really outside of the full integration into the classroom. This is the right time to do this anyway. And I've never come to the board and said that in the past. I've always been very conservative when it comes to one-to-one, but this is from a fiscal perspective, from a device lifespan perspective, from a teacher comfort level perspective, everything is lined up. This is the right time, but we still want to make sure that we get the most use out of them that we can. So we are going to be focusing very heavily on professional development, and we're actually in process of that at the moment, but we'll be expanding it. We'll be relying on the tech coaches, and we'll be talking to other districts that have had the highly successful deployments as to what they've done for professional development for their faculty and creating a solution based around that. So with that being said, I've just got two slides left, questions to consider. I won't go through each of these ones, but basically on the left-hand side, it's like, look, this is what I can do if I've got a device, this is what I can do if I don't. Things like, would you rather have students using up-to-date information or would you rather have them use a textbook that's five years old? Do you want to have them access dynamic information or use printed and photocopied versions? Do you want them to learn how to care for technology by actually using it, or do you want them to learn how to care for technology about how to care for it? I won't go through each of those, but good things to read. And this last slide isn't in your packet, but unfortunately, I'm sorry, but I thought about this one this morning, so I added it in there. This whole thing really ties into the Future Reading Pledge that Dr. Oertl recently signed and the message that he took about what TOSA School District to the White House, that we will help our students conquer present and future challenges. You see that little tie into our district mission statement there, right? By eliminating the inherent limitations of location, time, and physical media. I put those up before in the past. They're all restrictive, right? Location, you've got to be in the class to learn, we need to get rid of that. Time, you've got to be in the class at this time of day to learn, we need to get rid of that. And physical media as well, well, here's a book that's limiting by itself, just its very nature is limiting. So this initiative and issuing Chromebooks to high school students at this point definitely brings us along those path, along that path. And there's an extra slide for sources, and that's all I've got. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Board members. Mr. Croner?
Start. Thank you. It was a nice presentation. One thing I didn't see in your slides was a dollar sign. So what's going to be the yearly cost once we get going?
200,000 to 250,000, I think. For new devices in case of some issues.
And how did, I know we had the ability for families to buy insurance and take care of the iPads, and we handed those out, but what's the current situation with Chromebooks and what will you do?
We haven't come up with a final solution yet, but in one of the slides that I mentioned before about the parental concerns, that is a very strong bullet point in there, and we'll make sure that that's addressed. I don't have a definitive answer for you at this point in time.
And this is a minor part. And this is a minor point, just something I wondered about that wouldn't affect the initiative at all, but with that many Chromebooks in a building, I imagine that charging them and keeping them charged during classes is going to be an issue. So, will students have the ability to charge them? Are you adding more outlets to classrooms, or how will you?
Students will be required to charge their devices and bring them to school fully charged.
And they will last a full day?
Oh, yeah, 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 we get like the newest Chromebooks, twelve hours off of a battery. You know, on the odd occasion that something drains dramatically, it'll be at the teacher's discretion to maybe let them use some outlets in the classroom. But part of the issuance and part of the guidelines that we give them will be, charge it every night, when you get home, plug it in.
My last is just a comment, this is an interesting time in education, because I was reading an article last week about one of our elementary schools, and it was about a new interactive notebook that they were using in their science classes, and how it allowed the students to be individual, allowed them to share it with their classmates, allowed the teacher to look at what they've done. And I was trying to figure out what this, what this really was, and it turned out it was a spiral notebook. And so, as we do all these things, you have to keep in mind that, you know, the techno, we need the technology because that's the way things are going. But sometimes paper and pencil and the ideas behind that are still important, too. But I know this is a, looks like the right way to go and like a good proposal.
This isn't about the device.
Okay. Mrs. Thie?
Thank you. I just wanted to expand briefly on Mr. Cronin's question about the cost. You mentioned in your presentation, by the way, thank you very much, it was very complete, and I appreciate that. You mentioned that it would be within the dollar amount that's currently allotted for technology each year. Did I understand that correctly?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, then I misheard. So this would be an additional expense?
You know what, with regard to the minutia of where the funds come from, I think I would have to defer to Mr. Mack from that. But I think it would be appropriate for me to say that the funds are coming from initiatives that the district is already involved in anyway. Or reallocated from initiatives that the district is already involved in anyway. So, for example, digital resources, the funds that are spent on physical textbooks compared to electronic resources.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a handle on whether we're talking about an extra two hundred and fifty thousand or if this is moving money from one pocket to another. That, so, that helps, thank you very much. And then my other question, again, it's not important, but I'm just curious. What would happen to all the iPads that are now in the high school?
We're going to keep them for another year. The ones that are in the iPad, in the high schools will move down to the elementary schools. With, for the exception of a few classes that are very heavily vested in the touch feature of that, at this point, we've decided to let those classes retain those devices. And we're going to address those next year where they'll be, their replacement is part of the regular cycle anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Muehlfield?
Thank you. Jamie, I really liked your presentation style. It was very cool how you had the grid and you were zooming in and out.
Students use that.
I think it's great. And I also want to make special note that it does seem to me that you're in the classrooms, working with the teachers, making sure that the need matches what they're trying to accomplish educationally. And I can hear that from your presentation.
I'm not personally, I rely very heavily on our tech coaches and other people in the building that give me that feedback. Without them, I, you know, this isn't just me.
No.
This is a group.
Right, and I was glad that you said that, because, again, it's a team, and we want to make sure that we're, you know, adding these resources where they're needed and increasing them. And that's what I hear you saying in this presentation, that we are continually creating access to this kind of learning environment, this more dynamic collaborative learning environment. And that's what I'm hoping I'm hearing, and it seems like I am. So, I think you should move forward with it. I understand that they'll be, you know, we'll be moving resources around, we need to do it. And I, I find it very curious, too, that we're going to be providing maybe some value add to our graduating students. I think that could be, you know, a really nice thing for our community and, you know, for the parents that, you know, I mean, it could be a big help. That's a really interesting idea that you guys came up with, so. So thank you for proceeding in this way.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
How close are we to blurring the lines between the classroom and the remote learning? I think about my work environment where we have a great many meetings, and a great many of them use things called WebEx and go to meeting, and where there's a conference call and there's a visual display. It seems that with all of, with so many students with a dedicated device that perhaps somebody homesick or needing to travel for some, you know, school-sponsored event could somehow listen in on the classroom if there was opportunity. And I know we're not exactly there, but is there any thinking in that direction?
Actually, we are there to a certain degree. We've had a number of homebound students that we've brought into the classroom remotely. We have a number of students that are participating in classes in other schools that we're involving them remotely. With that being said, I certainly don't think that we could ever use this as a replacement for a physical classroom.
Of course not, I'm thinking as an additional tool that somehow with so many devices, the opportunities to do creative things expand.
We have, we have some hybrid classes, I think Dr. Earl's itching to.
I'll give you one example, next year, what I would like to see at our high school level, I haven't told anybody, Jamie, but, but next year, we don't have snow days, in particular at the high school level, that we can, we can have a count, if there's a day where it's unsafe for.
We didn't have them this year.
We're not having any more this year.
We didn't have any.
It's not ten below outside.
Sorry, kidding, kidding.
But, we would organize something that all students would be required to access, go online on a so-called snow day, and there would be activities and work that would be slated, and it would be a student contact day for the purposes of the count. And I think with, with this initiative, we certainly will be able to do that.
I was going to mention the potential for no snow days, but I thought it was too volatile and controversial, but now Dr. Earl's done it, so yeah, absolutely. If there's, if there's a snow day, then, or a bad weather day, just posting assignments and the requisite amount of work online would be sufficient to exclude the absence.
You know, I know I'm supposed to be last, but since Mr. Meyer asked this and Mr. Hanley, were you involved in some type of an initiative in MPS a while back where you had to create something similar to what Mr. Meyer is talking about, the team?
The team? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Okay. If there was a crisis?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Are you comfortable just talking about that a little bit? I mean, it was.
Actually, what Dr. Earl talked about, which is if there was any problem where kids couldn't come to school.
Could you, would you mind, I'm sorry to do this to you, but if you wouldn't mind using the mic?
You're jogging my memory, actually, you probably remember better than I do. But the idea was that anytime you couldn't do face-to-face with kids, you could, in fact, do it with technology. And there's actually one alternative school right now that only meets four days a week. And the other day, the kids are working electronically. And it was also to reduce the cost of busing, you know, that, these kids, we bus them every day, so we only bus that, that school four days a week. So it wasn't just snow days, but anytime, the idea of even a four-day week was possible. And they're actually doing it in one of the high schools now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that all, Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey? Thank you. Dr. Earl, I love that idea. I'm reminded of my son who was in the first Lego League competition, and one of their challenges was collaborating with one of their, maybe that, no, maybe they wrote this yet. They had to collaborate with one of their peers who was in the hospital, and they did it via technology. So, it was pretty real-life applicable learning. Thank you for the important updated data on technology use in the classroom. I appreciate that because I think it really backs up some of what we've been seeing anecdotally. And I will now be able to reference some of that data when I'm talking about our needs. And just kind of curious, I kind of had an eye-opening moment tonight when you said books are limiting. And it was like, more like an aha moment, like, yeah, I can remember teaching. And we didn't have technology back then, and just kind of like, we're my kids and we're kids go today, you know, on, on the internet, and how, yeah, textbooks can be limiting now, you know, in hindsight. I'm just kind of curious, your opinions, or if you've seen any literature or studies on, you know, apps and websites like Khan Academy versus even using digital textbooks? Do you think that maybe that's becoming a thing of the past also? Or are we still pretty much relying on digital textbooks?
Oh, I think, I think digital textbooks are going to have a place in a curriculum environment for quite a while. They're still developing. And the beauty of them is that you can incorporate other resources into them, right? So, a digital textbook may incorporate Khan Academy as part of its entire package. So, no, I don't think, you know, using things like Khan Academy are great, but it's, it takes a lot of effort to base your entire lesson plan and entire, maybe semester around that. And it's, it's a great tool, but is it maybe something that Ms. Ehrenberger would be happy as being the proper content resource for that? Maybe not, maybe, or the total content resource. Doesn't mean it can't be a part of that, you know, so a digital text, much like a textbook is just a tool, there may be other things as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Cronin?
Thank you. Another question or two. Is the reason that we're giving the same Chromebook to every student because we'll have certain software loaded on it and makes it uniform? And what I'm getting at is, I would imagine a number of students will already have laptops by then. We have a bring your own device to school, so is there a reason why we give them all the same one rather than let students, maybe a third of them bring their own notebooks and not have to buy as many, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, there's actually a number of reasons that are very different in nature. The first of those is just merely from a technical standpoint, we can support them, okay? We provide the device, we support them, we can manage them, we can provision specific applications to those devices, and the rules and policies that we wish to be on those devices. It's an equalizer, everybody has the same. If we just let students bring in their own devices and we rely on that, then we've got a significant portion of our, our student population that doesn't have a device. Or maybe they have an older device that, you know, much like their old bike or their old tenings, they're embarrassed about and they don't want to bring it to school. You know, so by issuing a device, we eliminate that concern entirely. We'd still have the BYOD network open, where if a student wanted to bring their own device in, they could. But that's much more restrictive in nature. Keeping in mind that we've still got to focus on things like security, making sure that we don't have viruses and malware and exploits on our network, et cetera. Because we do have some sensitive data here and a very big internet connection that's attractive to foreign entities. So, yeah, that would be it.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Botten?
Yes, thank you for your great presentation. Question, what do you see, maybe Mrs. Ehrenberger could also come in, the correlation between the direction we're going and the textbook issue? Do you know what I'm asking? You know, the teachers that would come and, and I realize it's just a tool, do you see any correlation between the direction we're going with Chromebooks and a potential direction versus?
I will say this, that digital texts have been, are not, have not been intuitive for our teachers. We have found that there's a learning curve for teachers to be able to adjust and to use a digital text as significantly as we'd like to do that. There's also a lot of competition of free support that competes when they're using a digital text, they're looking online. So, there is a need for tech integrators, individuals that can help our teachers, be able to teach them how to best utilize a digital text. So, that's a challenge that we have and that we need to continue to work on if we're moving in the direction of digital texts. We have to provide some support on how to use those effectively. For our students, it might be more intuitive, but for our staff, we found that we have some bumps along the path in getting them to really want to dig in and use them. And therefore, then our students don't benefit from having that resource available as much as we'd like, so.
So how would you address, just as a follow-up? We know this is a proposal or a direction we, we might want to go, and yet we might have a department, I'm just going to, science or social studies, could be English, whatever, that comes to you and says, you know, we really want this hard copy. So they would come in front of the board, like they've done other times, presentation, these are some resources we'd like to purchase. How do you balance, do you know what I'm asking? They see, the teachers see this need of, yeah, I'd like to get, get everyone a history book, a newer history book, because we've had these things in their hands for eight years and they're old and.
Yeah, so, so how we balance that is that we typically look for class sets or have some, some hard copy. And typically, a lot of the deals that we make with companies when we are purchasing a digital text is that we can get some hard copies. So we might have, like, available in a building, a class set of something, a hard copy for, we also want to have that as well, just to meet the needs of all learners. Sometimes students want to have that hard copy yet, or we might have a student with special needs that would benefit from having that. So, we don't want to completely walk away and not ever have any of those available. However, a lot of textbook companies today are not printing hard, you know, copies of things. So, eventually, that probably won't be an option forever. But when we've had a chance to optimize that, we usually ask for class sets or something so that it's at least available. So we have a little bit, a choice, but not for every student.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You know, these last couple of questions have been interesting because I think we're tempted to think, okay, if we go to this Chromebook for every student, that's it. You know, we're not going to be using the iPads and we're not going to be using texts and so on. And I don't think that your presentation made that, that case. And I'm sure that's not the effect, but I think when people first start hearing it, that's what they think. So, thank you for the clarification that, you know, kids can still bring their own devices. This is one tool, and it's going to have some very specific uses, correct?
Well, I wouldn't like to box it in by saying it has specific uses, because once those devices are in their hands, well, there's freedom to do a lot of other stuff as well.
Okay, and I guess I mean in the way that it's going to limit other technology use.
I'm not sure, can you clarify?
If every student has a Chromebook, how will that limit their use of other technology? How will a classroom, you know, will there still be smart boards? I mean, I'm assuming this is something that's not going to be replacing all of that.
Oh, no, no.
But I, I think from the questions we're hearing, you know, people start to wonder about that.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, I fully support doing the Chromebooks. I just, you know, it's funny because I spend time with young people and four- and six-year-olds who have iPads and DS and all kinds of different things, and they're awesome and they love them. And those same two kids, I read to them at breakfast every morning from a book, you know, a hard copy book, and they love it. They can't wait to see what book is going to be the next day. So, I guess the point I want to make is, you know, that this is one, one tool for learning. And for kids, I mean, we have to keep moving. We have to keep getting more technology into their hands. We just have to do it. And so I think, it seems to me, from what I know about the Chromebooks, that, that's, that's the way to go price-wise, they're durable. that's the way to go price-wise, they're durable, right?
They're durable enough financially, it makes this an opportunity, it makes it sustainable.
Okay. And, you know, I guess the reason I'm asking this question about other technology and, and hard, you know, hard copies and so on is because our community is going to be asking that. Not everybody, you know, does your job and, you know, breathes technology 24/7. So, we need to be prepared to talk about how it's a part of what we do, but a very important part and a necessary investment. So, I am glad, I'm very glad to see that we now have a timeline.
Mr. Baden?
One further question. You mentioned in one of your slides, and I think you'd probably concur with it, it comes down to the teachers. Ultimately, we put a Chromebook in every high school, it still comes down to how teachers... Do we have an idea of how that, that whole, that would, it would come out in terms of the picture? When we talk about it comes down to the teachers in terms of what training, motivation, I mean, Jamie mentioned about coaches, et cetera, do we have an idea what that would look like?
I can, I can talk about that. Currently, we, we haven't released them yet, but we've, are developing a whole series of self-paced learning courses, online self-paced learning courses to just give teachers the basics for some of those tools and services that I brought up. I think moving forward though, you know, that's not the way that everybody learns, of course. Moving forward, we're going to be focusing on each of the content team areas, or content teams themselves, and the coaches and instructional technology specialists working with those content teams to say, here's how you can integrate these devices into your class, here's where you can get some benefit. But then, of course, the teachers make the decision on when and when not to do that.
Is there, do?
I, I will just add to that by saying that we've done some restructuring of personnel to ensure that we have more people capable of helping teachers integrate technology in the classroom. Probably one of the best examples is that our district teacher leaders were restructured and, and when we hired instructional coaches, we also had as a criteria that they had to be, have skills in being, being able to integrate technology. And at our elementary BLT most recently, they were actually doing staff development on how to engage learners in the classroom, and in doing that, they actually modeled the use of technology for engagement. So, it actually seemed very seamless, but they were modeling for teachers, this is what it looks like when you engage students, these are things you can do, but in doing it, they were using different kinds of technology and applications. So, teachers had exposure to them and they were, they were pretty simple applications to be able to, to use to increase access for learning in the classroom for varied learners. So, and then teachers paid that forward back in their buildings, so they would take that back to build more capacity. We also have Jason Throh and Ed Price sharing a position to integrate technology. They have been primarily focused at the secondary level, working on getting digital textbooks integrated and used, helping teachers to do that. They've also done some training after school. They've worked with our library media specialists who also have instructional technology and technology training as part of staff development. So, we've seen them participate as well. And I have met and Jamie has met with us, with both the instructional coaches and technology people together to talk about how they can collaborate and work so that they strengthen the instructional side for technology individuals and we strengthen the, the technology side for instructional people. So, we're trying to like have those two teams of people working together more often and dialoguing than they have in the past, and that's been really beneficial. In fact, it was Ed and Jason that worked with the instructional coaches on that staff development to integrate the technology. So, we're seeing that cross-conversation which we haven't had before, so it can benefit our teachers. So, we have explicit training and then we also have job embedded training. Sometimes they're just in the classrooms, working with a single teacher on how they can use technology more effectively to accomplish formative assessment or giving a summative assessment online or whatever their interest might be or their need might be. Does that help?
Yes, it, it's great that you follow that up with, because it gives me a clearer picture. You know, we've had this initiative for years, whatever, before, no child left behind. I like to think in this initiative, no teacher is left behind. And yes, it ultimately comes down, but providing the resources that you've put together and what Jamie has presented to us, I mean, that's a great impetus in, in making this work as a tool, so I'm glad to hear that.
I think I'd also, there, I mentioned in one of the slides that where these things have been highly successful, they've had a good solid professional development methodology, and we're going to look at those environments. We might even do some site visits and conversations with them and maybe further develop the model that we have now based on that input as well. So, it's recognize that it's extremely important.
One other question, follow-up. So, you see the lab, labs that we have within the building sort of like going away? I mean.
Some of them, not all of them.
Are we using the labs like for testing? Map testing?
Right now, yes and no. Depends on the environment, depends on the school itself, depends on what the school's schedule is, but we have some cases where labs are consumed by the testing, but bringing the device like this in for every student would eliminate that problem. There's always going to be the need for labs, traditional Windows computer-based labs, because Chromebooks, while they're great, they're not comparable to a $900 Windows desktop. And we have some STEM classes, Project Lead the Way, some, some aeronautics classes, et cetera, that, that require that sort of horsepower. So, those labs will, will always exist, but what I'm talking about are the more traditional labs that are maybe just used for writing or general internet browsing, things you find in the library, et cetera. They'll, they'll, they'll dissipate and go away over time, you know?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Meyer?
I, I just want to say, I, it, from all appearances, you're doing an extraordinary job of, of, of matching our, your, the technology you're providing with, number one, the state of technology, and more importantly, the state of our technical culture, that computers advance and they're faster and there's more apps and tools, but as a community, you're helping us grow in our technical culture, our technical abilities and expectations that we have these dear little fifth graders here showing us how to use technology as the school board meeting starts. They're going to have expectations when they get to middle school and to high school. And you're sizing the technology and the technical services to the culture and the culture's ability to utilize them. And that's the most effective way to promote learning and the most effective use of our, of our, of our budget as well. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we have one other report from Dr. Erdl.
I was going to suggest a collaborative book study with the board online, but unfortunately, the state law does not allow that because it would be a walking quorum.
That would have been good.
Yeah.
Well, could result in a walking quorum, you don't want to take that risk. We'd sent out something, we completed essentially the first book, the book study from that, and sent out some information, some suggestions for, or ideas, and asked for suggestions and ideas regarding some book studies. I don't know, Mr. Randall or Mrs. Casey, and we responded with a couple of ideas if you wanted to share some of those.
Yeah, we did get a few. I guess I would take this opportunity to, to ask if board members felt that was a helpful initiative during that first book study and would be interested in doing another one? If, if people wouldn't mind commenting on that?
Mrs. Muehlfield?
Thank you. I do think it's worthwhile. I know it, we probably have to learn a little bit to, you know, do these more productively, but I learned a lot through the process in working with, you know, different, you know, different board members in a, in a different setting. I thought it was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Meyer?
I'll, I'll suggest that a component of our book study annual cycle be participation with the All City Read, which is now in the process of studying a wonderful book called Orphan Train.
Yeah.
And last year, it was Rocket Boy. So, obviously, not the only thing the board would do, but if the, the board would, our board would climb on board with that community initiative. I know, Mrs. Randall, you've been active in that, and so I, I would ask that that be a component of what we do as well.
Good, good idea. You know, our students were involved in that as well. There was an essay contest and Jenny O'Dow and Cohart at the secondary level. Yes, both were involved in that All City Read too, so that was pretty cool. I guess I'll, so, rest of the board?
Yes, Mrs. Casey, I'm sorry.
I enjoyed the book study.
Okay.
I, I feel that, I think from what I, I understand is that in the past, you know, we've brought in people to facilitate some growth amongst the board and I feel like I really enjoyed the book study and we had some, I think, robust conversation that stemmed from that book. So, I appreciated that and I would welcome the opportunity to, to do another one.
All right, thank you. No other feedback? Okay. Anything else from you on that, Dr. Erdl?
Good.
Okay. So, we have talked about a different, a couple of different books. Dr. Erdl will include that information in his memo. So, may I then, excuse me, is there any community comment on the two reports, technology or the book study? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn, excuse me, community comment, please, on anything that was not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into an executive session to discuss a superintendent's evaluation. Statutory exemption to Wisconsin's open meetings law is contained in section 1985-1C.
So moved. Second?
Mr. Meyer and Mr. Baden? Okay. And Mrs. Galante, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. We are adjourned, thank you.